Okay, we'll call this May 27th work session to order. If you'd join me in the moment of silence with pleasure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to Susan's comment. Do you have any today? Unless there's anybody online?
Yep.
We'll roll right into the recreation and heritage center strategic plan overview and Mr. Mason Archin tee that up, I believe.
And actually having to be handed it off to Susan, our rec manager. So I'll just chime in when I'm a little annoyed.
Alright, Susan, it's welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. So the recreation department and the senior center had had a strategic plan done for about 20 years ago. So it was time, way past time to get that done and try to figure out where we're going and how we're doing and where we want, what we want to look like in five to 10 years. So we took some time. There were about 15, 16 of us that went over to the art center for a couple of days in February. Our lower consulting worked with us. They had also done the art center strategic plan a few years ago. And Joe spoke very highly of them and it was a really great experience. Really interesting. I'd never gone through the process before. So he did a really good job of asking questions that didn't feel like you were really working too much, but he was really getting good information out. So the group consisted of recreation and heritage center staff, advisory, the park and rec natural resource committee members, and two members of the active adults. So it was a nice, it was a nice, good group. A couple environmental resources staff also attended. They switched off Azan and Mac, so they were there too. So day one, we kind of just talked about our current reality, where we are, and kind of talked about where we wanted to go in the next five years. And then a couple of weeks later on day two, we identified barriers. Why can't, what do we need to get to the next level? What do we, what don't we have? What do we need? Kind of thing. So what did we need to overcome to get to the next level? So again, current reality, these are all things you all are very aware of, but our, the membership over at Heritage Center is going crazy. We've got lots of seniors over there, which is awesome. We have about 67 facilities. We have almost 500 sessions in our summer brochure. Our programming over at the ELC out at Ritter is expanding and of course, our population is growing. So all things that you guys are very well aware of. Current reality, we're growing obviously out at Ritter Farm Park with a new facility out there. We have a beautiful new facility out at Antlers Park that we're doing some programming out of. We're working on expanding our social media communications. We're going to be dedicating a page for our website. We also have our Facebook up and running now for Parks Recreation and Heritage Center. We have updated our scholarship fund. Help me with my numbers, Joe. We used to give a hundred dollars per person and they could use an 80/20. They had to pay 80%. No, we paid 80%, they paid 20%. We just didn't really have very many people using it, so we had a substantial balance in it. So we were hoping to, to reach more people and even, even doing 80/20 splits, some people still couldn't afford them. So I think we're up to $300 per person and we will pay 100% of the program. So.
And they've seen substantial growth.
Yeah, I've seen, and we're hoping to get the word out a little bit more on how to get people to use that system, but yeah.
When you say dedicated website, Parks and Rec doesn't have its own website?
A page on the, oh no.
So we, we currently do not have our own URL and the park and rec department doesn't have a landing page in the same way that Art Center Heritage or the city page does. As part of the new website design, we aren't getting that. So that's a great step for us to allow kind of a dedicated URL and a slightly different look than the rest, which will stand apart a little bit. So interesting.
Last one is just substantial growth in the active adults over at the Heritage Center. We talked about trends, you know, what's going on in our community. Obviously, we have new cultures coming to our community that we're trying to service and find out what they need and like. We have people retiring, again, trying to, trying to make spots for all of them over at Heritage Center. We're running out of room there pretty quick. Obviously, we have a growing population and we have some facility growth needs. People's expectations are rising and we also want to stay affordable. Our strengths in our department, we think our staff is a strength of ours. I always say park and rec people are people, people. We like, we like to be with people. We like to listen, we like to, you know, we like to hear from them. So we think that's a strength. We have a great community that's eager to participate in our programs. We're still growing and attracting new people and that brings in new ideas and new requests for programs. We're very thankful that we have open-minded leadership. I have worked in other communities where you didn't try something if you didn't know it was going to be successful. It's really nice to be able to offer a program knowing it's going to maybe start small and grow from there. So it's really nice that have the leadership that's, that's open to that. And then we have a very strong support, volunteer support over at the Heritage. Gaps, this is kind of things that we need more of. Resources, we can always use more time. We can always use more money. We can always use more people. Community feedback, we have started doing surveys of everybody who participates in our programs. So we kind of, we're getting really good feedback from the people that are participating, but we don't know why the people who aren't participating aren't or, and/or what they want or need. So we would like to do a community-wide survey to get the people who aren't already participating with us. We have pretty good community awareness about us. Or excuse me, we, we are, we're hoping that we have enough community awareness and education about our program offerings. And that, part of that is our brand and identity. We would like to create a brand for the recreation and heritage. So when people see a flyer or they see a brochure, they know that it's coming from us. A lot of times people mix us up with community ed. So we want to make sure that people know who we are and who they are, what we're really good at and what they're really good at. So we just want to make sure they know who we are. Cultural awareness when we deliver programs and how people perceive our programs. Again, we want them to know who we are and what we do really well. And then, and we are limited in our facility space. So we don't have a community center. We don't have gyms. So we, we make do. We've done, again, we've added some programming over at Antlers, which has been super helpful us, helpful. And ELC has really helped us out at Ritter Farm Park, but otherwise, we're still kind of struggling for space. And we are, we have met as staff. We know that the Heritage Center is really busy during the day, not as busy at night. Art Center is opposite way. They're a little less busy during the day, a lot more busy at night. So we're trying to figure out if we will, if we can move some senior stuff over to the Art Center or some Art Center over to the Senior Center and then recreation has to fit in there when they're, when both of those things aren't busy. So the space is always the gap. Boulders are things we need to get over. Again, flexibility of facilities are aging. Again, as we appreciate having the Heritage Center, but it was, obviously we all know, it used to be a police station. So there's lots of small spaces in there. We need some bigger spaces. So how do we make use of that? Are we able to, you know, what can we do over there to make it better use, more useful for us? Community expectation for niche programs. Again, an example of that is cricket. We have culture that would like some cricket, so we're trying to meet that need as well. Things, programs like that. We have a lot of competition from other recreation providers. Athletic associations, the YMCA, soccer shots, everybody, everybody's, everybody's got something recreational. Senior high, senior living places now have their own programming as well. So we need to convince them that why they need to come in and participate with us. Staff workload and demand, we're small but mighty, which is great. And we, again, sometimes in the summer, we get a little crazy because we got so many things going on. That's our busy season. So we just have to make sure that we can all handle that. Reviewing previously successful programs. We have, luckily in Lakeville, we have a long history, but we have some things we've been doing for a really long time. And sometimes we don't take the time after it's over to really talk about, how did it go? What can we do better? Can we change it? Do we need to modify it? Is it maybe need to be retired? We've done it long enough and we just don't need to do it anymore. So we just need to make sure that we're evaluating our own programs. And then allocation of facilities to programs. Again, we just, we'd always use more facilities to do things.
I have a question.
Sure.
And maybe, I don't know if I'm giving ahead myself, but when you're talking about space needs and you're talking about the competition, are we looking into partnering with our competition?
Yep, and we do that. We, you know, we do partner already with community ed. We do some joint programming, things like that.
I was thinking more of the senior buildings to have, you know, run some of their own stuff, but maybe creating a partnership with them?
We have over our history done select programs and Art Center Heritage built a great job of that. I think there's opportunities with recreation as we continue to look at how those programs develop to maybe look at that more. But I think we're, we're always open to working with other community partners to increase or improve their programming and do the same with ours. So a lot of what we offer are based on partnerships.
Where do they hold their activities? Are we able to just rent their space?
So we do, we have a combination of programs that run kind of in all of those formats. We host some, you know, we, this is where Antlers has been great for us. You know, we do a lot of programming at Antlers with other partners. And there are some programs where we will travel and go to, you know, some of the senior living facilities and do programs. It just depends on what they're looking for, what fits for them. And then for us, it's also about making sure that it fits in financially. We need to be able to cover our costs for supplies and staffing and all of that. Sometimes that fits their model, sometimes it doesn't, but for us, it's always a good opportunity to kind of reevaluate and explore. So.
And I would say we have really good partnerships with many of the senior living. They sponsor a lot of the programs over at the Heritage Center. And again, we have done kind of a senior living tour where you go to like five different places. You have lunch, you have snacks, things around, around. So I think Bridget has built a really good partnership with the senior living places in town.
Be kind of cool, have a progressive dinner, huh?
Yeah, and that's kind of what they do. They used to do, you know, you'd have.
Or lunch, I guess.
Yep, exactly. That's right. Alright, so we took all of that information that we went through in those two days and then came up with our vision of where we want to be in three to five years. Which is great because again, I say, sometimes you put your nose to the grindstone and you're just trying to get through every day and every week that you can't even think about three to five years. So it was really nice to take two days to think about where do we, where do we really want to go with this department? So, yep. Alright, so yes, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so all of, all of that kind of coming together and allowed us to create what is the strategic plan? And this is kind of the big picture, the five-year plan. This is kind of where we're intending to go with things.
Right, yep. So we got down to kind of the four directives. Exploring new funding opportunities. So again, this talks about our scholarship program. We've already made changes to that. We may make some more to that. Simplify our fees and make sure that they're in line with everybody, with everybody else. So we're not too high or too low. We've also, for our, for our rental facilities, we've tried to go to block pricing blocks of time. So it's just very standard. We don't have all different hours and times and things like that. So it's fairly easy to know how much our, what our expenses are. Again, sponsorship programs, we've talked a little bit about that. Again, we have great partners in town that allow us to keep our prices affordable. One of the things we're talking about over at the Heritage Center is requests. Again, it's an aging population and the reality of it is that people pass away when they are at a senior center. And so, you know, promoting to them that you can leave a legacy to us, however big or small that might be, remember us and that. So again, exploring new funding opportunities is one of our strategic plan. Reviewing current facility use and future needs. I feel like I've talked a lot about facilities here already, but we would like to tour some other facilities to make, to see how have people used their art center or their heritage or their senior centers for programming? What do they do? How do they make it work? What do they have that we don't have? What, you know, we can dream a little bit of what we want. Yeah.
So I think the big thing with that is it's, we kind of point to what we did at the Art Center about maximizing the existing facilities that we do have. And that's one of the things, you know, looking at spaces that we already have and small tweaks or adjustments here or there. And how we schedule spaces, how we use spaces allows us to use them very differently and allows us to then increase programming or serve the community differently. So that's kind of a big focus on, on the facilities we do have. And it's been a good discussion among staff about utilizing a facility like Antlers that is rarely used or rented during the week, you know, mornings. It allows us now an opportunity to use that more for rec programming and save evenings and weekends for rentals. So exploring those options as well, so we can continue to provide space for recreation, to expand programming, meet the need, and use a space that's maybe going underutilized.
Does that also include like the conference room at Public Works, you know, as like classroom space, like not just parks, facilities, but also?
Yeah, and we, I would say Casey and Susan do a good job as they, as they're planning programming to find a space to house them. We always find a place and, you know, whether it's at the Art Center Heritage, you know, recreation really does float, but it works. And I think as we've met with staff, you know, pulling the whole group together, we've had some really good discussions about finding those times that are commonly available within our own buildings, right? And Susan's already referenced, Art Center may be less busy during the day. Heritage is bursting at the seams. So what programs could feasibly be moved to the Art Center? Those are the types of things that we're looking at when we're talking maximizing facilities.
And some of that will take time. You know, don't like change very much and they really like to go to where they're comfortable. So we surveyed all the group leaders to say, would you be willing to do your book club over at the Art Center? Would you be willing to go to a park building? So we're still getting those, that feedback back. A lot of them are not, I mean, they're not.
They're not super excited.
They're not super excited. They might be willing. So we'll see. And I think partly too, and Bridget's very good about adding, let's add a book club. Let's add a this discussion. Let's add a this. And I think as we add, if they want to add something, we're going to say, we would love to add that, but you might have to, you have, might have to meet at the Art Center or at Antlers or somewhere else. We'd love to have you, but we, you just don't, you just don't fit into our schedule right now.
Is there any value in trying to leverage? Because there's, you know, there's some private spaces certainly for like daytime, you know, bonus room. There's nobody. Day. And then the F3, which is on 50, I don't think they use that during the day. I just wondered.
And I think at this point, we, I think those types of spaces we, we have, where recreation is maybe more in the need is gym space or those larger spaces where we can do some of the sports-related activities. But again, we, you know, we've used classrooms at the Art Center for exactly that and it's worked. It's maybe not ideal, but there's larger spaces, I think, that we can, we can continue to explore at this point. And that's kind of where we hit this, you know, that next topic as we look, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Obviously, you know, the evaluation of new or expanded or future facilities is always going to be kind of out there. In the short term, this is about what can we do today, you know, next five years to really use what we've got. So.
So as a community, do we have many training centers that are focused on training kids? Usually after school on whichever specific sport, but their facility is pretty much empty during the day? And it would be that are probably like gym space?
That's, and I guess that's a good thought. I would say what comes first to mind is, are the schools, which we always have trouble getting into.
No, but there's independent businesses.
But that's an area I would say we probably have not explored as much. And it is.
I don't know how many there are in Lakeville. I mean, I, you know, I know other communities have some, but I don't know what's in Lakeville.
There's Lakeville Soccer. They have a, but you know, that's just their own. There's the total hockey place, you know, but they're all gonna, they're all for profit, you know, they're all gonna just want to cater to their business.
Right, they're for profit and they can rent out their space when it's empty, I guess, you know, for a reduced rate since it's not doing them any good. Having to air condition, you know, type of thing. It's costing you money empty.
Yeah, that was another thought. Yeah. Yeah, if they can fill their space, I'm sure they would, right? So if we offer, try to offer something there, it may be a time when it's wouldn't really be available. Alright, so we'll move on to optimize programming to meet community expectations. Talked a little bit about this, using feedback to update programming. Again, we're getting some really good survey data back from people who are already participating and hope to do a community-wide survey to see how we can get people to find out about us. Prioritize collaborative staff planning and evaluation. And again, that's, we've already started doing that, getting together to talk about how we can all work together, which is really great. And I know the Art Center has come over to do some art, art programs over at Heritage Center already. So just, you know, using our staff to do some collaborative different programming. Again, create the recognizable, recognizable brands so people know who we are. And then assess technology to improve customer and staff experience. That would be our rec track. We want to make sure people know how to make an account, how to register. We occasionally have problems with that, so just education on that. The URL for the park and rec will be helpful because they don't have to go through the city website to try to find parks and rec. They can just go right to park and rec. Another part of this is we'd like to get all of our rentable, rentable spaces on one page. Right now, you have to go to the Art Center to rent the Art Center and to the Heritage Center to rent that and to us to rent any park shelters. So if we could just have one page with everything you can rent right here from us, it's just easier to be like, you know, where do I fit? So you don't have to go to three different places, just one.
Let's see, yeah. Now our seniors, when it comes to smartphones and apps and things like that, surprisingly good.
And they offer, actually offer some classes over there. Of course, you're going to have the older seniors who aren't very technological. But they're, they're pretty savvy with it. And some of us, the, over at the Heritage Center, a lot of, they, they take a lot more in-person registrations than we do. You know, a lot of our, our registration is online recreation. At the Heritage Center, they walk in and, and register there. So if they can't, obviously if somebody can't use their computer, we're going to get them registered. So. But surprisingly, some of them are probably better than me. See, and then assess staff responsibility and volunteer opportunities. Evaluate full-time and seasonal staffing based on programming level. Most of the programming that we do right now is based on contractual arrangements. So we hire a contractor to do our tennis lessons and then we usually do a split, 70/30 splits. So I always go for easy math. So if we charge a hundred dollars, they get 70, we get 30, right? So then the model used to be you hired tennis instructors and you hired teachers and you hired coaches and things like that. Now we are mostly contractual, so it's going to be a balancing act of, would it be better to hire our own staff? Is it possible to hire our own staff? Can we find our own staff? It's getting a little better. There was a few years there where it was really hard to find any staff at all. So that would be a, that would be a comparison that we'll be doing, whether we should stay with contractual or try to hire some more summer employees. And then establish or do a volunteer program. Again, the Heritage Center does a really good job. They have great volunteers over there that, you know, greet people at the door, they set up for lunches, they call people, they do the library, lots of volunteers. And in the recreation department, we don't have a great ongoing program. We need volunteers for things like the Haunted Forest, for the Illumination Walk, things like that. But we'd like to get a better year-round system going. So if we need help with something, we, we have a bank of people to call. We also are looking back into getting an internship program started again. To get a student here in the summer would be really helpful, just for time-wise. And again, that's usually getting a person who's ready to start their career at a better, better rate than they're going to make full-time. So get some work out of them and get a project done usually that will help, help them. That's some of our staffing that we're working. So that's the four pieces of our strategic plan. And then, so underneath all of those two, we have everybody of those assigned tasks. So here's just kind of an idea. It's an 18-month plan. So our first things will start becoming due here July 1st and then again, October 1st, January 1st, April 1st. And so there's an implementation plan for the recreation side and also for the Heritage, Heritage Center. So.
One of the reasons we liked this consultant and this process, particularly at the Art Center, for the two that we did, was specifically related to the implementation plan. It kept everybody on task, you know, first 18 months we've got laid out and then we renew it after that for the, for the five-year duration of the, of the strategic plan. So, so far I would say the challenge with it has been everybody is excited and is moving so far ahead and not taught. So just keeping in mind, this does not all need to be accomplished today. Right? This is five years ultimately. So we can take our time, we can do this right. But it's good to see that we got enthusiasm amongst the staff. And I would say so far, things have been really positive. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions?
I have a few. I, this could be a sensitive question, but as I'm hearing you talk, I see the Heritage Center sort of as under the umbrella of Parks and Rec, at least from how a user might see that. So does, is that kind of the direction, at least in the marketing and how you use the system that you're going? Not necessarily that the director of the Heritage Center would be under Parks and Rec Director. Or maybe I, maybe I had confused the whole structure anyway. But I guess, is that kind of what you're thinking?
So Heritage Center is under us. Bridget does, Bridget as the Lakeville Area Active Adults Manager works for Susan. And Bridget really oversees the facility and the programming there and then works closely with the Historical Society of Yellow River. So there is a kind of a direct workflow with all of that. But I would say this is precisely where the confusion for us comes in because we reference a lot of times the Heritage Center programming, when in reality, our senior programming is actually Lakeville Area Active Adults. It's very rarely referenced that way. And I think just in naming, in branding, there's confusion. I would say from the customer's perspective, we're less concerned about that. You know, we want you to know we've got programming for 50+, and here's how to get it and here's where you go. How it's structured within the department is less important. Right? And it's in the same way that Art Center also reports to us, but also has its own identity. Heritage is really that same way. And recreation and parks really should be in a lot of respects set up that same way. Even though it's all the same department, right? We cross-use facilities and, you know, programs and supplies and all of that. But yeah, it does lead to some confusion.
Because the other, the other thing that I've noticed, you already referenced it, but when I get the community ed packet and then I get the Parks and Rec packet, sometimes I have to go back to the front cover to figure out which packet I'm looking at because I don't, some of the programs seem similar, but I mean, what's the strategy and what you're not doing because community ed is doing them?
And we have a good, we meet with community education to talk about kind of our lane and their lane. And there's some programming we even run jointly, right? So there's some programming you are going to see community ed's brochure and our brochure. Where I would say if confusion comes in, our rochures do look very similar, so much so that when we published this summer, as we realized, community education used the same photo two years ago. So which, we should try to avoid, right? So we're, we're trying to work on that with communications as well and looking for some, maybe some updated, updated appearances for ours so that it does stand out. I think when we talk about programming for recreation, we have a clear idea of who we are and what we do. I don't think that necessarily comes across to the community. And that's really where we want to continue to try to make sure that there's a better understanding of who we are.
I would say more often, for me, because it's confusing, I'm assigning my kids, I forget who's up. But when I hear from people in the city, they think all the community ed stuff is ours. That, you know, they see that as separate. I know this would be, I don't even want to say a lot, a one unified registration for both would be really great. I don't, it sounds like a herculean task, but that would be nice. Yeah, one day you could have one, one sign on.
And this is where we say at least on our part, we want to make sure we are making this as easy as possible. We know that the software that we use is not necessarily the most user-friendly. But there are things that we can do to streamline, to make it easier. As simple as just how you create your own account. And when we did the Henning Pavilion last year, Susan did a great video with communications on, you know, how to set up the tables and how the tiki works and all that. And that video was used constantly. Our renters reference it all the time. So the thought was, we'll have Susan do this for our public creative health rec class. Same thought process. It's been great for us. And I think there, so there are things like that that I think we could do to at least make life easier for, for the residents.
Yeah, I mean, I was, this is, my in-laws were like, oh, we're going to assign these, our kids and our kids are for the same thing we set up for the community ed ones, parks.
Did you, did your group during the session talk about sort of who the target audience is? And you referenced all the different groups that provide programming. Is our audience the programs that they're not doing? Are we trying to keep it broad so we're offering lots of different things that everyone can, even if it's already offered in another way?
We do try not to compete, you know, especially with larger organizations like Community Ed. But there are areas that are really Parks and Recreation, right? Nature programming being one, the Ritter Events, the Community Events. A lot of the sports with Rev Sports and all that is very much us. And those are the things, I think, when, you know, when we talk about the confusion between the departments or Community Ed and us, we need to talk more about the things that are solely Lakeville Parks and Recreation. And I think that's where, that's where our focus is at this point. We need to highlight the things that you can't get somewhere else. You're not going to get nature programming like we can do it right through Community Ed. So we've got to continue to focus on what we do and what we do well. The other thing I will add, and we did, part of this process we did, it's a mission money matrix, looking at what we charge for programs and where it falls within our mission, which I think was a really good process for us as staff. And that's where we were able to kind of focus and highlight some programs that were maybe low on our mission and low on revenue that we need to reanalyze whether or not those are programs we continue to offer. If it doesn't meet our mission and we're not making revenue on it, why are we offering it? And there's a whole series of programs that are high revenue and high mission. We need to focus more on those. So I think there's a lot of analyzing that we're doing as far as what our offerings are. So, but it's been fun.
I saw a small smile when you talked about the changing expectations of, what are some of the things that our Heritage Centers users are looking for that have changed over time?
Well, pinball. Pinball didn't exist, you know, five, ten years ago, so a lot of that. Yeah, well, and I, again, I ran a senior center for a lot of years a while ago too. And the whole model is changing, right? Ours is fifty-plus and it's how do you get those younger people in there? I'm over fifty, but I don't know that I would go over there. But maybe if they had a kayaking trip or they had something, maybe I would do that. So I think especially with senior programming, you have to be like, how do we keep going, right? The, again, it's a model where, you know, you've got a changing population. So we got to keep, we got to get younger people coming in. So I think that, I think Bridget's doing a really good job of, she calls them junior seniors, of attracting people, you know?
But part of that is also that the staff there is reviewing, you know, programming that's later at night, right? So we know if you're fifty, if you're fifty or older, often you might be working. But the times that the programs that we're currently offering are still running. So we're reviewing kind of how that's working for the facility because she's got a whole demographic that we're not really hitting.
Sure.
So.
Well, I imagine if you have fifty to a hundred-year-olds, you know, so that you're getting into almost three generations of folks using these Heritage Centers. So yeah, that's, that's an interesting thing to try to keep up with three different generations of people.
And I think, I think the next wave, I'd like to do the next prediction. I think it's going to be pinball and arcade games. Get them into playing a little Pac-Man into that age group.
I suppose you need to be in the mentality of the schools. You have the elementary, the middle school and the high school levels, you know, as you think about programming.
And our programming really goes, you know, birth through, you know, end of life.
I was thinking about Heritage.
But yeah, but as an apartment, we are, we are offering, you know. And so to your point though, we do focus on programming that is, should be accessible for the entire community. And that's where we say, you know, increased surveying and our ability to look at what people truly want from us is going to be an important phase of that.
So did the Arts Board and the Parks Board, they weigh in on that?
Not Art Center, since it's just Heritage and, but Park Rec Natural Resources did review and they were pretty involved in the process from the get-go. But it was at their, the month of already? Yeah. Yeah, so.
Other questions? Just good. I look forward to seeing some implementations of that.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, Mayor, I just might add, you know, we talk a lot about the investments we do in public safety. Talk a lot about development, economic development. But as you all know, we survey our residents about why they moved here, why they lived here. The top two things are parks and schools, right? And we talk a lot about parks, physical parks. I'm glad that we're doing a lot more deep dive around the recreation. I think it's, we're just scratching the surface on really kind of things.
Again, can I ask one question quick?
Yes.
Kind of on that, do you get a sense of like how many people that aren't from Lakeville participate in our activities?
Yeah, it's a benefit with the registration software we have. We know exactly where everybody is from. So there are demographics that we pull in. And this is one of the other focuses, we're trying to spend more time looking at the statistics on our registrations. It is very useful information for us in a lot of respects. So.
And how often do you have to look at the other two school districts, Community Ed programming, to make sure?
We don't do a lot of comparisons with the other school districts. We mainly meet with ours.
Well, they're all three Rs.
Yeah, well, yeah, you're right.
The thing is, is that the community has grown. So now you have a whole nother population that's, you know, sitting in two different directions, going to two different school districts besides the main one. So I guess that's, you know, as we're looking at what's crossing and partnering, we probably should be looking at partnering with them too.
Thank you. All right, well, now move on to our tree preservation ordinance.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having some time tonight. As you know, Forest Department and Community Development have been working together on creating some ideas around the beefier tree preservation ordinance. So Zach and particularly Grace have put in a ton of effort and research into this process. So we're here tonight to update you kind of on the general outline of the ordinance that was included in the packet. And the whole idea is that, as you know, from when we met with you last fall, we do have a minimal tree preserve, tree ordinance in our subdivision code that doesn't really do a whole lot other than requiring a tree preservation plan. And then if there are trees earmarked to be preserved, there's guidelines and requirements in there and how to, that's done. But there isn't any kind of threshold requirement of what should be preserved. And then if that is removed, the reforestation. And so we have gone through a few iterations of the outline that's in your packet. We have shared that with the Planning Commission. We held a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, the Parks and Recreation Natural Resources Commission Committee on February 6. And we also shared it with a handful of developers who responded positively. Nobody, you know, was, oh, shocked and awe that we're considering this. They provided some feedback. We have some responses to that that were included in the packet. And so we really want to have an opportunity for Zach and Grace to go through the latest outline and see if we continue to have buy-in from you. And if we do, we will turn this outline into a new ordinance. We will repeal and replace what is in the subdivision code, put this into the zoning ordinance. I think that's a more appropriate place. And then Grace has some information just on how does this all flush out from a cost standpoint, using a couple of example projects? So, enough to raise.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks for having us in again. I'm going to run through just the outline that we put together as far as the bullet point list, the main points of the ordinance proposal. I'm going to skip some of the smaller stuff just to focus on the big changes that we've been looking at and we've reviewed with all the different areas. I've talked about it internally as well. So, you know, I'll start with Bullet Point Three, the scope of application. You're really looking to keep this affecting, you know, new development at the time of subdivision, much like it is now. Any new building construction, you know, new construction on vacant lots, meets and bounds lots. And then residential tear downs and rebuilds where they're expanding the footprints. And that would only apply to heritage trees on the site. So we're not looking at every tree on the site, trying to be specific to trees of higher value.
So how do we thread the needle not becoming dynamic? Where it's like in the news. So how do we like preserve trees, but then also like allow some, you know, flexibility in some of its property?
Yeah, I think we get into that with some of the later parts. The nice thing is I don't think we're looking to charge a thousand dollars an inch.
Yeah.
Things like that. I think that was one of the big things we were talking with Luther up there and hearing his presentations were, you know, the values they were assigning were huge.
Okay.
And it was, yeah, every tree, every inch, regardless of where it was, regardless of what the project was. So we're definitely trying to provide some incentives, some exclusions, things like that that would make it less, let's see, overwhelming as a way. So we've got that. And then item C, you know, we did talk about including a look-back provision. And so you have property owners who decide to go in and clear, you know, more than two acres, you know, within two years of submitting an application for development. You would have that look-back process to then try to capture some of that tree loss that was occurring right before, you know, they proposed a new development. And then, yeah, obviously applying both the public and private development projects.
I didn't quite understand the look-back process.
Sure.
Now I understand a little bit better, but when I read it, I went, what?
Yeah, so the idea with the look-back is, you know, we're trying to avoid, you know, someone coming in, since we're going to have the thresholds established, right? That would say you can remove up to fifty percent of your trees. We're trying to prevent someone coming in, you know, a year, a year or two beforehand and just clearing the entire lot. And then when they submit their application, we have no trees.
Also, it's a look-back on a future project versus if they came in last year under an old plant, probably.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, for a future project.
Yep, got it. It's a loophole. It's protection from a potential loophole.
Yep.
The ordinance.
I don't know if you all heard about a lot on West Side of Thirty-Five? I think you guys have a picture of it. That was clear-cut?
My mother-in-law asked me about it.
Yeah. Nothing we can do about it. So if this were to be adapted in the future, if that were to happen, then they come in within the next year for some kind of a subdivision or development of that property, then we have something in the ordinance that will help us get some tree preservation or reforestation, I should say, back on that property.
Using satellite imagery, right? Because then we wouldn't really have a survey of the one.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, and really peaceful, I mean, the amount of aerial imagery out there now is updated so frequently that's pretty good, good look-back.
In two years, how did you arrive at two years for it?
Yeah, that was something that we saw in other ordinances. You know, we kind of toyed with the idea of, you know, was it one year, is it five years? You know, really, you know, having this out there, people who really want to get around it are going to say, oh, five years, well, great. I'll cut them down in five years, I'll submit an application. So two years was just kind of one of those standards we were seeing. It seemed to make sense, especially for, you know, developers, who's going to, you know, who's going to be holding land and what are they going to do with it before developing it? So.
We don't know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Can I just ask for a clarification?
Yeah.
For instance, like you brought up that other property. Is this privately owned property that they're clear-cutting before they sell it to somebody else? And if you're nodding yes?
Or they bought it and are just clearing it to eventually develop.
What I'm trying to figure out is legally, how much right do we have to tell somebody that they can't clear-cut? What if I just, my husband and I decided that all the trees that are on our property, we just decide we don't want them? Do you, do you kind of feel where I'm going here?
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's not necessarily that I plan on selling it, but I just decided, you know what? I'm sick of raking leaves. So I've cut down a bunch of trees. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, you're not changing your house. No, you're not.
Right.
Subject to that. So if you're not going to make your house bigger, if you're just clearing it because you want to clear it, that's different.
Yeah, it still remains tied to development process and an application for development.
So if you were going to tear down your house and make it bigger, then you would be subject to this process? If you're just reclaiming, can you retire or raking leaves?
And then the two acres, in that scenario, it would have to be greater than two acres.
Yep.
So if you have an acre lot or a two-acre lot, you could still clear it up and do your bill. And you would, you'd be exempt. It's if you have a five-acre lot, then it's going to kick in.
Well, it's really looking at the scenarios that are on that screen. So that's the property a couple of weeks ago that was clear-cut. It was immediately put on the market right after. And so this look-back would apply. It's more likely not to apply to the current owner who did this. It's going to be whoever buys it wants to develop it. It may very well affect the price that they end up negotiating because whoever decides to buy it. Now, this, it's actually not going to apply to them because you were in this in place. But if it were in place, it might impact, you know, what someone's willing to pay for it because they now find out they have an ordinance where they're going to have to do some reforestation. So that may have some impact, but it's really going to apply once development occurs.
So are they notified, are all of our residents that own two acres or more notified of this ordinance?
We have not done that, no.
No, but would they be? Because how else would somebody else know that they're buying a piece of property that now follows, falls under this ordinance as they write up a purchase order?
It'd be just like any other zoning ordinance we do. We don't notify everybody if every zoning ordinance changed. It's up to their, it's their responsibility to know what the laws are in place when they sell a property or buy a property.
Maybe public notice.
Yeah, we'll do all that. We don't notify everybody of every single change.
Well, I'm not saying to do it. I'm just trying to figure out how they don't get caught up in not knowing. Not the owner, but the person purchasing.
That'd be part of their due diligence.
Do you look back and go before the ordinance is passed? Does that make sense? Does it, does the clock start ticking once we pass the ordinance?
Yes.
So you can't actually go back and say something?
So somebody said a tree.
Yeah, I mean.
We have to ask.
There's some practical.
Yeah, I, we haven't really figured. It's a good question.
Yeah.
Can I say that?
Yeah, thank you.
One question I have, and I think it's something that you want to look at when you're asking those questions about how to best rate it up. So this outline says in the look-back, a total tree removal greater than two acres. It doesn't say a lot greater than two acres. It says a tree removal. I'm looking at this, you have a seven-acre lot. Could somebody do three removals of one point nine acres and be okay?
Yeah, the idea was that it would be cumulative.
Okay.
And in this case, yeah, it's a much larger acres than seven. The exponent is the amount of acres of trees that they cleared.
All of it.
Yep. And so, and this is the latest aerial that we have, so I'm not sure if they've done more. But that was what was mapped anyways.
Sad.
There's already another square there. Looks a little too geometrically cleared in the center there. Okay, sorry, that was a long answer to the question. I didn't understand that. I thought it was to your point.
Yeah, no, we had a lot of talks about the look-back. Just because there are so many issues around it and so many questions about it still. So, but yeah, we have definitely seen it in other cities. So we've included it, that's a bounce to the thresholds as well.
That terminology is something that's known by other people. Okay.
Yep. Yeah, we actually had one developer actually ask us about it, like before we even got to that point of the discussion, like, is there a look-back?
Okay. There's, okay.
Excellent. So yeah, we'll move on to number five, so the removal thresholds and replacement requirements. So I think last time we talked, you know, the first time we talked, we had some lower thresholds in here as well as a whole list of exemptions. Um, we had some lower thresholds in here as well as a whole list of exemptions. Uh, after talking with the different commissions, talking internally, um, talking to developers, we actually raised those thresholds. Uh, so currently for residential zoning districts, uh, we've got fifty percent as a removal threshold. And then for commercial industry, we've got seventy percent. Uh, and the idea here is that we actually eliminated the, the exemptions. So before we had a list of, um, you know, stormwater ponds, streets, sidewalks, all those different things. And there was just a lot of potential confusion about how you calculate those. And so we raised the threshold overall. Uh, and the only exemption that we'll get to, or one of the exemptions that we'll get to is just for major collector streets and arterials. So things that property owners don't really have to say on where they go. Uh, so we didn't wanna, uh, you know, hit people for those kinds of things. But everything else, we just decided to raise that threshold instead of going through that whole list and. I mean, have folks calculate, you know, the area of sidewalks and which trees fell within that, so. Um, and then that's, uh, Tina can speak, speak more of this, but it's based on residential, it's based on zoning district. And so we're not looking at land usage. We're looking at actual stuff. So as far as the calculations go, uh, Grace will talk about, about the math. Um, yeah, we've got a, we've got a set of calculations. We talked about it a little bit last time. We're really trying to prioritize some of those higher value trees. I know last time we had talked about conover trees, hardwood deciduous conifers. And so the math still remains, uh, the same as far as how we do that. But we're really trying to prioritize some of those higher value trees, so.
Um, so the tree replacement requirements is really where those different, uh, priorities come in. Um, we have the different categorizations of trees, um, and conifer, hardwood deciduous, and then heritage. Um, the most emphasis, the highest replacement rate is on hardwood deciduous trees. As one half, the diameter inches removed above the threshold of fifty percent need to be replaced. And then heritage trees are just a flat one hundred percent of the inches need to be replaced. Um, the way that they calculate how many need to be replaced at what ratio is. A sequence of subtraction basically. Um, we put less emphasis on the less valuable trees. So the conover trees get factored in first, and that leaves usually the conifer and hardwoods to be replaced at those higher rates. So I think it prioritizes a little bit of them focusing removals or putting more footprints of construction. In areas where there are more conover trees and potentially preserving more areas with larger and hardwood deciduous trees. Like oak woodlands and stuff.
Why, why fifty? We're like forty or thirty five when we had this conversation.
Yeah, I know we started, uh, with forty. We went down to thirty after we talked the first time. Um, a lot of it was looking at, you know, what the actual impacts were as an examples. And then starting to look at some of those exemptions or some of the footprints of streets, buildings, all of these different things like that. And fifty kind of emerged as a number that was, um, common in some cities, but also, uh. Accounted for what actually gets built on the site while still providing a good replacement number.
So. Yeah, I'd be curious to see what that number is. I mean, cause I would rather make it more difficult. And then we have to back off later. Then if it's not doing the job, then try to increase it to this.
Yeah, we'll definitely see some comparison between other cities and see how much that percentage. Their higher threshold changes. Did you want to move through the summary first?
Yeah, we can finish up. So, yeah, we talked about, um, as far as the, the thresholds. And how we get to that, we've got some examples here we can show as well. And then, yeah, as far as the replacements go, you know, anything. Remove over fifty percent is an example for residential requires replacement. That's where we get into the second set of math where we're looking at. Uh, you know, if you've got, you know, a thousand inches of hardwood deciduous that have been removed above the threshold, you replace five hundred inches. Uh, of that. Um, and a whole bunch of math that goes along with that, so.
It doesn't seem like a lot.
Yeah, it doesn't add up.
Yeah, I mean. We will have a word of community here. I don't know.
I'm trying to wrap my head around replacements, so, okay, you take out a, I don't know, twelve inch tree. So are you saying that that has to be replaced by a six inch tree or three two inch trees? Or that's what I'm trying to get wrapped my head around is what does that mean to replace it? Um, is it, is it inch for inch or is it, you know, just the total cumulative?
Yeah, so it's, after you do the math, it's the total cumulative and then divided by a two and a half inch tree. So. In the case of a twelve inch tree, you know, the math is, is just under three trees of two and a half in caliber. Um, yeah, so as we start looking at site wide, it does add up. Um, so let me give you those examples. I mean, we've got, maybe just, I think there's a lot of questions here that.
Yeah.
Get answered by some examples.
Yeah.
Should we, should we filter those?
I guess, I guess I have one other one is other requirements to then maintain by the developer that they survive. Was, was like the line. Okay, yeah, we can throw up like fifty trees, but then.
Forty of them don't live.
Yeah, what's the point?
Yeah.
Isn't, but the warranty, it's not very many years.
It's hard.
Is that a?
It's hard to do more than that.
It is.
I would, I would say, I mean, it's gonna be hard to have people keep coming back after two years.
It's just that I'm looking at some of these other properties that have been built or whatever. And you're suddenly seeing trees that are dying out. You know, type of thing. And it's like, and then they have no incentive to even replace that tree. They can take it down because it's now dead. Does that make sense? But it's still a young tree that died. Depending on the type of it.
Let's go through some examples. I think that'll answer a lot of questions.
Sure. Yeah, I have made up two samples. Didn't make them, but use the math. Um, first one, we've got Caslano. So they removed a lot of. The trees that we placed higher and sun, so the hardwood deciduous and heritage, they removed all heritage trees on the site. Um, ten, most of the harder deciduous, but then left a lot of the conover trees. As you can see in the little table, um. Overall, sixty one percent of the significant diameter inches on the site were removed. It's about two thousand two hundred trees out of, I think, uh, three thousand nine hundred trees. Just to make it simple. No heritage trees were preserved. So in our write-up, we have a credit for preserving those. So it would apply to. Um, for at a two to one ratio for up to fifty percent of the replacement requirement. Um, so no heritage trees were preserved in this case, so it only counts as a hundred percent required replacement for those. That drives up the numbers. Um, with a fifty percent removal threshold. The replacement requirement works out to be about eight hundred and seventy three trees. That's at a rate of one half because of the hardwood deciduous they removed. That is what came out of the calculation. Um, and that's plus the two hundred sixty, uh, inches of heritage as well at a rate of a hundred percent. And I just divided that number of the inches that I got by two point five to. Find the number of replacement trees that would be planted. Um, their landscaping plan planned for a hundred and eighty seven trees as screening. Under our write-up, that would count, but the six hundred and five planted on individual lots would not. So we're seeing that as bare minimum two trees per lot. Um, does that make sense for me?
Yeah, so in this example, they're about seven hundred trees short of replacement requirements.
In this example, where would those six hundred and five trees be eligible to be planted?
So those are ones that they had planned for the individual lots that is part of the two trees per lot requirements. Uh, as part of the discussion and part of the write-up, uh, we don't include those as being credited. Because someone could move in the next day, cut them down.
Right.
Uh, and so we only accounted ones that were in common areas, uh, in development areas. In other properties that are under control of not the individual property owner in essence.
So in, in their development of this property, they would need to figure out a way to have acreage available to put additional trees. Uh, so the development plan would need to.
Change.
Change.
Or cut down.
Or.
Or cut down.
I think that's what this site demonstrates is kind of that. They did not plan to save any hardwood deciduous trees. And we would hope that future developments would because we place a higher replacement rate on those.
Yeah, I, I guess I was just trying to think through the implications in the planning phase is that they probably would just cut down fewer trees. As opposed to having more replacements, you know?
You would hope that would be the result. I mean, that's certainly when we're working on site plans. Um, behind the scenes before things ever get to planning commission, to work through that, um, because of this ordinance going forward. There will be cases where there still may be plentiful reforestation that's required that just doesn't fit or can't be saved. Um, sites that are, um, have a lot of topography, it's challenging with grading. There is a fee in lieu where then we would collect funds. Um, that we will then have to determine how that fee is used, but practically could be used when we build a new park. Um, or a parkway and the city needs funds in order to. Reestablish forests and areas, then we can use that fund for that.
So how is the cost, point two hundred or seven hundred to that those trees?
Oh, look at that.
So, um, a lot of information, but, uh, the cost you were asking about is at the bottom typed out there. Um, at our fifty percent threshold, it'd be about four hundred and seventy nine. Four hundred and eighty thousand. Um, in a development scale, I mean, compared to some of the other numbers we came to, that's small.
Um, because how many lots was?
It was like four hundred lots, okay.
Two hundred, six hundred landscape trees, three hundred lots.
Um.
Yeah, that's.
I compared to some other cities nearby us and otherwise. Um, the yellow box is the number of their replacement trees that they require under their ordinance. Um, and the blue box is ours. For cottage growth, they're probably pretty similar. In this example, they actually ended up less than our requirement. Which is because of our heritage tree hundred percent requirement for replacement. Um, otherwise, they pretty much hover around the same requirement. Because they're replacing at a fifty percent rate and the, uh, removal thresholds are similar. With Dayton and Farmington, the removal thresholds are much lower, more in the range you were thinking. Um, and also Dayton, the replacement rate is higher. So you can see how that comes out in the red box. Their required replacement trees are much higher. Um, and Farmington, even with the same. Uh, calculation for replacement trees with the one eighth, one quarter and one half. They still come out higher with a thirty percent removal threshold.
So. What was, what was the feedback from developers on fifty? Cause again, I, I would, if we're rolling out an ordinance, I'd rather be more strict on the threshold than that. Than coming out at fifty and then being like, well, I guess we'll go to sixty, you know, like I. Just sort of practical, cause I mean sixteen hundred dollars a lot.
Sure. I mean, it's generally positive.
Do you?
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of how many developers pay the fee at new versus, I mean, just, I'm gonna maul the trees down and just pay a fee and?
Yeah, that I don't have.
Yeah, we would generally, I think our current fee in lieu, uh, is written up to be the same estimated cost. As planting those trees. So it's at least a.
Yeah.
The same option.
Yeah, so there wouldn't be a benefit of not planting trees financially. So. Uh, and yeah, when we presented the information to the developers, that was the version that had, I think, forty percent as a removal threshold, but it had the exceptions listed, so. And so, yeah, the feedback wasn't, they weren't overly critical of that.
Well, and I don't know what you're farming and does, but I know Dayton, you know, it, it shows forty percent, but there's lots of exceptions.
Yes, this is just.
Which ends up being just tricky now. You know, when you start to accept out ponds and all these other things, it's just more math. That has to be done either by the developer and then us double checking it. Um, so having just a straight percentage without all those exceptions. Here's easier for, for both them and us. So that's how we ended up back on fifty. Um, if he's a, forty to fifty is probably the most common.
Yeah, but as I think about the big parts of the wooded lots that are still left in the wild. I don't know if there's be a lot of exceptions in there. It's just a lot of forest. If I think about Southwest, you know, west of thirty five and. You know, I hope around Orchard, Light Acre.
One, one thing I've been thinking of is, is there an appeal process or is it pure negotiation? Cause I mean, there's a lot of trees, a lot of inches and a lot of math. And if you reach a stalemate.
It's, it's an ordinance. There's no negotiation. So the, the ordinance will become very prescriptive.
Just a part deal.
Yep, we, we even talked about, you know, trying to come up with some kind of an Excel tool that we can share with folks, put in your numbers. It'll spit out the, you know, figure it out, spit out the math for you or the treason or, you know, that math for you. Um, to help folks. Developers are well versed. Majority of cities have these ordinances. Um, so it, it is enough for negotiation.
Okay.
So we can't, we can't go in it. You know, forty and let someone talk us up to without changing your ordinance.
I guess more of my question is how do you resolve? They're saying it's this many inches and you're saying it's this many.
It's a factual tree inventory.
Yeah.
Yep, that's all part of the ordinance. So that's step one. We currently do that.
That's the first step.
Yep, that's first step. But if, if council is, you know, wants to start at a, you know, if you were to change a threshold, I would change the residential one. You know, we could start at forty without exceptions. Um, that's what we had originally shared. Um. We could start there if that's something that feels important right now. Again, we can't always change it, but we just have to do it as a zoning ordinance amendment. It's not something that. Community development staff or forestry staff is gonna debate with somebody.
Give another example of a, not a, maybe you said.
Yeah, I've also got it preserved. So this one is a very heavily wooded lot, a lot of oak woodland. And they ended up preserving about a.
What's the name?
Very, very good. Um, a five and a half acre lot in the middle there. And, uh, I think dedicated it, um, as now a lot. A great recreation opportunity. Um, they still overall removed fifty six percent of the. Significant tree inches. Um, so about sixty percent or six percent over that fifty percent threshold. Um, two thousand two hundred four trees. They did preserve a lot of heritage trees. So you can see up in the top table, there are eight fifty eight. Um, diameter inches of heritage trees on site. They only removed three hundred and nineteen. That three hundred and nineteen is still a hundred percent replacement, but the amount that they preserved counted for about. Fifty percent of their required replacement rate. They cut it by half. Trees. Um, the replacement requirement is, came out to two hundred and forty four trees at a rate of one half. From the amount they removed. And that's cut by half because of the heritage tree credit. Um, another thing we're thinking is a significant woodland credit to further encourage preserving trees as groups. Um, for better future health, maintenance, everything. Um, and that. We're considering whether or not to let that zero out this requirement or just cut it by half again and give. It's still importantly reforest, but also there's really good, strong efforts to preserve in this case. Um, they only proposed a hundred and forty trees planted for screening, but those would all count towards or with this reforestation requirement. So. Uh, took down their, their numbers a lot by preserving that money.
When does the, if you did the woodland.
Hmm.
When does that calculation fall into place? The way you stated it made it sound like it would come after. Um, the, the heart, the heritage.
Right.
So.
There is, we would work it out so that it's not. Uh, not double counting at, if we could. Um, or that you would have to choose one credit or the other.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if it's going to a sale and then they say. You know, this is on sale, then you get an extra ten percent off or some, you know what I mean? But really, by the time you calculate thirty and ten is not forty. You didn't get forty percent off.
Yeah, it would go in with the rest of the calculations. I haven't set it up yet because we need the locations of the trees. Um, but once they calculated all the ones they preserved, that number of inches preserved, they could just. How did we word the?
Yeah, in effect, it's at the same time you're, you're covering your placement requirements. There's a line with that that talks about the, the incentives for preserving woodlands at that same time.
This to me is the ideal situation for what we're trying to accomplish.
Encourage.
Encourage.
Yeah, and currently we had originally with, uh, you know, an incentive jumping to a rate on the list. An incentive both for heritage trees, so if you're preserving those on site. Um, you would get a credit for that, but yeah, as Grace mentioned, the idea is, you know, ten trees scattered across your site that may or may not be adequately protected. You know, that's great, but a woodland itself uh, would be a more, more desirable end goal. And so if we have a credit, you know, that includes that. Um, so for instances like that, so you can count trees that aren't necessarily heritage trees, but they're being preserved as a woodland. So.
So when they do that, someone should go out and count all the trees. It's not like a.
It's a survey.
Signed by a certified board. Well, let's give our, our, so here's a, some of our staff.
That was my kind of concern about this is.
Yeah.
It's like the same kind of.
It's a tree. No, they're usually pretty good. I mean, the folks they have up through the survey generally know what they're looking at ninety percent of the time. We see a solid, everything that I've identified correctly. And they have a, what I meant, meant by was they have a license, there's a license. It's not a. They have an incentive to do it, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, this is the same comparison. Still, other cities landed pretty squarely, higher requirements than us. Um, we definitely had a, you can see with cottage growth is the probably most similar to our requirements right now. Um, we still landed pretty far below them because of that heritage tree credit. Um, taking a lot of the replacement required off. Um, and estimated cost came out to, yeah, four hundred and fifty thousand. For those added two hundred trees, yes. Or one forty-four. Yes?
Chocopee has just stood out to me.
Yeah.
But then, and then Woodbury as well, that, I mean, the replacement rates really. Seem to fulfill the purpose of preservation. They're acting as a deterrent, right? It's not necessarily. There's a tree preservation plan, not a tree replacement plan necessarily. I mean, so I. Tried to say there, it just makes, it just makes sense. You wanna make it tough to cut down the tree.
Yeah.
Rather than just. Why are their costs so much higher than, what, what am I missing between Woodbury and Chocopee? It's so much more expensive to meet Chocopee's requirement, but Woodbury's higher, right? Cause you gotta put, you gotta replace every one inch with two inches.
Um, I think Woodbury is a one-half. Sure. So it's a fifty percent.
Replace is one to two.
Place, replace one for every two.
One for every two, right? Oh, so Chocopee isn't.
One for every one of us.
Yeah.
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
But I, I guess what I'm trying to say is it seems like a deference to cutting down trees is, it, it is, is better for this than it is. Just making it easy to replace them. That's why your heritage plan is, the heritage tree plan in that second example really stands out. You're standing with you all probably.
So. I mean, for my standpoint, I, I do think that forty percent residential and some sort of woodland credit. For our proposal on this makes sense to me.
Now, like we just said about preservation and if we can incentivize that, that's a good way to do it.
It's just that first example really stood out because they really didn't preserve any of that, I mean, that's what we're trying to avoid, right?
Yeah, the next thing, having the numbers in the first example, you know, the forty percent makes the double the number of trees required. Over the fifty percent removal threshold.
I'm hearing support.
I like your simplicity part too. I think that's really important too, because it's difficult for us to figure that out.
Yeah.
Just imagine trying to comply with it.
So next steps will be creating the ordinance. Um, we'll adjust the residential to forty percent, look at the option for the woodland credit or significant woodland credit. Craft the ordinance, that won't take too long, and then the cycle would be going through planning commission, back to council with, with a stop. At the parks commission. So we'll do parks commission first at the formal public hearing of planning commission. We'll let everybody who we sent these drafts out to know when that hearing will be held, so developers and builders can come and. Speak to it if they want or ask additional questions and then get it in front of you, so. As soon as we can.
Good, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Did you know you had this measurement when you decided? For a stream? Hope you get some sort of like certificate. Thank you, I appreciate it. Then we. First quarter report, natural report.
Thanks, Council, Mayor. Um, as you know, first quarter, there's, there's not a lot happening, seasonal things, we haven't got our tax money. Building permits are just starting out, but um, as we're looking at building permits right now through May twenty-first. We're at fifty percent for the townhomes that we budgeted and we're thirty percent for the single family, so. You know, we're just getting into the construction um, three now, so thinking that those will come up and we'll. Need or exceed the budget benchmarks on those. Um, just touching base on a couple of high points. Um, the charges for services are a little bit underneath the, the budget benchmark. Um, mostly because our Eureka township, we build that in June. That's sixty-four thousand this year. Um, so revenues, when we were looking at those for the general fund, that they came in at. Excuse me, three point two percent of budget, but again, most of that reasoning is because of the tax money not coming in until June. Um, as we're looking at the expenditures in the general fund, we're under budget, so we're at twenty-one percent of the budget overall. Um, some of the departments are over and highlighted those in the narrative, but personnel in general is uh, at twenty percent. So five percent under budget benchmark. Utility, so the electric costs are actually seventy-four thousand higher than they were last year. Um, part of that is the rate increases that the utility company put through. Um, but they are at twenty-five percent budget, so we did a good job of budgeting that. Mayor and council, your expenditures are actually fifty thousand dollars more than last year at the same time because of the way the league of Minnesota cities changed their billing. They always billed us in October for like an odd year. It wasn't even Valley School District years, so they finally changed their billing to match calendar year for like all the cities do. So that's why that one looks higher. Um, city administration fifteen thousand higher than last year. Um, we added the National League of Cities membership, so that was sixty-four hundred. And that accounts for most of that increase. So, um, other things, just noting human resources just slightly higher than budget and that's due to the software subscription timing of those emails that were made. So they're at thirty-three percent of budget. Engineering is just barely over budget at twenty-six percent. Um, nothing alarming. Uh, fire, fire, actually, it was kind of interesting that we um, did such a good job of budgeting. We um, are slightly over the same period last year, but most of that's due because of the fifteen firefighters that we hired at the end of March. Um. But it's all good in, in, in going forward because we received our first SAFER grant reimbursement in May of eighty-five thousand dollars. So you'll start to see that on the second quarter report where we have that up in the intergovernmental and we'll, you know, call that out as far as the SAFER reimbursements. Um, so for general fund, total expenditures, like, like I said, twenty-one percent of budget, so we're doing well as. As far as where we're at this time of year. Um, so overall general fund, nothing, no surprises, um, nothing alarming. Even legal counsel, when it's coming in at thirty-four percent of budget, it's, it's not all that alarming, just, I mean, seen the nature of things themselves. Um, any questions on the general funds? Did you see anything that you were?
I just, I may just, this is for at the end, but in like forward looking, right, there's all this conversation about how counties are gonna take a haircut from the state. What's the downstream impact on us, like future road projects or anything we do together? Cause it's like we get county money to do stuff, so are we a little isolated from that?
Well, kinda, a good example is the Boulevard mine.
Okay.
You know, they were gonna yank that funding from us this year.
Yeah.
We supplement, they pay us to supplement it basically. They were gonna yank that, you know, that's like ten, twenty thousand, I forget, so. Smaller things like that, but I imagine the county will have to start making some tougher decisions on cost contributions and things.
Yeah, okay.
You can also start to see where their, their charges for stuff in reverse, so. Like fiber installations now, they're looking at anything we partner with them on fibers, they're gonna start charges per, per monitor, per foot. So they're looking at, I think, also revenue side things as well as how can we squeeze more money out of the cities that charge them for services that they may not have in the past.
Yeah, I just be curious at some point.
Supply. EDG on the block.
Yeah, I do that.
So that's substantial, yeah.
Yeah, but maybe after next quarter, if you put a little foot on it, I'm thinking. Maybe if we're not seeing it yet, maybe it's too early.
We didn't. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't have to be the report, but just to keep us all.
So general fund again, like I said, nothing alarming. Uh, you can go to the communications fund, that's all um, pretty much coming in where we would expect it. Revenues are at nineteen percent, expenditures at twenty-two percent. Um, those revenues continue to decline as people find other options to their cable. Um, the liquor fund, uh, sales roughly about nineteen percent um, of budget. So a little under, but as all, everybody in the industry is seeing that same trend. Um, we are still keeping our gross profit healthy at twenty-nine point one percent compared to last year, twenty-nine point seven percent. Um, statute a great job of keeping expenditures down for first quarter because they're um, at only at eighteen percent of budget. So we're going through three hundred and forty thousand dollars saved um, compared to budget. So that helps all in the, at the end of the day. So liquor fund doing well is with what we've got. Uh, utility funds, nothing alarming there where is, we see the, the growth trends. Slightly, you know, the revenues are slightly higher than last year, eighty-five thousand for the water fund. We did build sixty-five thousand dollars, sixty-five thousand gallons more, but we did have a rate increase in twenty-twenty-five, six percent, so that's also contributing to it. Water fund doing well, expenditures are at twenty percent of the budget benchmark. Sewer fund, uh, similarly, um, the revenues are exceeding last year's at the same time. And part of that is the sewer rate increase of four percent, part of it is the increased customer base. Um, our disposal charges for our met council went up four point five percent, so um, when we're looking at what we pay them for the total for twenty-twenty-five, it's. By twenty-six million dollars, that is that budget. Uh, sewer fund also doing well, slightly under budget at twenty-two percent, so. These are moving like they should. Street lighting fund, um, revenues matching the benchmark slightly above last year again, growing customer base. And we did not have a street light increase in twenty-five, so. Um, environmental resources fund, those are in line with the budget benchmark. And they again exceed last year's partly to the larger customer base, but we also did also have a four percent increase in that environmental resources fee, so. Um, and just for what we've got for intergovernmental grant revenues in that fund, we've got five hundred and thirty-five thousand this year. Thirty-five thousand is for the aquatic invasive species from Dakota County.
Okay, so there's an example.
That's an example, yeah. Um, and then five hundred thousand for the greenway, green ridge park water, all the improvements. I'm not sure where that grant is from, so.
That's most likely why.
Any questions on how they're, how they're saying?
Um, where does the franchise fee number come in?
It, it, we will call it out. Um, you know, we've spent about, um, for what we caught, what it cost us cities for our facility so far was sixty-four. Forty-six hundred dollars that we've spent just in our, in our own city bills for our buildings. Um, we won't see our first franchise payment from the utility companies until July. So.
And where will that fall in this report?
I would call that out, I'll call that out in a separate debt service fund to show it, because I think that's very high profile and wanna keep that front of. Transparency, everything.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
Communications fund, so that. That is basically the franchise fee on cable, correct? Um, and we don't have the ability to step down to actually how most people get their internet service anymore, so that is just if you're getting cable TV. Would you pay that if you have?
You will, and only it's on the cable TV portion of your bill, or even if you have like a tripwire or something like that.
Well, it just seems like such an outdated.
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't been bills proposed in the past two years at the state level, but they haven't gotten.
Yeah, I mean, as you can imagine in the lobby.
Banned it or just to eliminate it all?
Yeah.
I mean, cause.
We can admit it in the lobby if.
But I mean, to me, it just seems like having it placed, we're really disincentivizing that one form of. You know, it's just archaic.
Yeah, well, maybe when ESPN charges thirty dollars a month, people will go back to. Okay, well, I, I, there has been conversations amongst mayors. Think about that and there's that bill, but then there's also the providers want to, to put a tax on like the Amazons and the Facebooks and like. Make up their revenue, so there's. Conversation, but. We're just SLO. I'd be curious to know what it was five years ago.
We have that trend in the budget documents every year, we can point that out.
And what is the fee per?
The five percent.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a tax on seniors.
You're the problem.
It, yeah. Shut it off.
All right, yeah, well, me and my dad and brother should put one YouTube account.
Cracking down on that.
Okay, thank you.
All of them are cracking down. We've been sharing different accounts in the family and having to.
Yeah, it's one way to keep families together.
Right?
This meeting's important, isn't it?
Yeah. Uh, all right. I, any items for future discussion?
I, I've got one that you all are gonna be really surprised.
Oh, man. Garbage.
Chickens. I think we need to, it's been a long time since we've discussed that ordinance, so.
Number of chickens. What about it?
Well, I think there's one issue that is, uh, the, I think the. Well, I think there's one issue that is, the, I think that Tina's, look, but the the material, like which a coop is required to be is wood in our ordinance and there's a common trend to be using that recycled plastic composite, so I think there's one issue there that we need to update, and I do think we need to look at the the number of chickens, just as a new found chicketer. I I think there, there's a certain rationale that can be made for increasing, well, and I guess, do we get many complaints? I think it would just be nice to have.
Yeah, we were doing.
Because when, it was set before I was here, so I was talking to planning commission chair emeritus about that three number, said, just kind of pulled it out of the air.
I think the three was since you had a five, it was three years.
It was within ten years, the member of the council that didn't hear, but it was.
Like the first year we were here.
Yeah.
It was the first year you guys were here.
See, it's like for the career council members there, it's even.
I don't even remember it.
No, because it was after.
Justin has sight on the issue now. That's just one. No more trash, though. I hope he's trashing.
Yeah, I do think we should. We should have a review of our trash zones and just, maybe, I don't know, we might just change, but I think.
I'd be on the list for later.
Is it? Okay. I have a, I have a decibel app for you now too, so you can.
A what?
Decibel, so you could, we can find out how loud is the forty-six forty.
Oh, I don't care anymore. No, I do, actually, yeah, no, that's still top priority.
Okay, any committee or city minister updates?
We had the Dakota nine eleven board meeting on the fifteenth, and probably the most horrible thing is we passed the two thousand twenty-six.
Asking at what point they're gonna not mess up sending a text message, because the two that have come into Lakeville are both in the states.
It's on the list of things.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Leave it at that.
Yeah, we, one thing that I wanted to mention is the downtown business association is looking at possibly of your taxes, that's wrong.
Do they put a number out of it, or?
No, they're gonna discuss it at their August meeting.
Okay.
I sent them several scenarios broken out by property on what that would impact be.
Okay, good, so they kind of have, so someone the deal is.
Alf met, you'll see a budget for board probably in the next.
Monday night's meeting, so.
Monday night's meeting, yeah. The thing you'll notice is that it doesn't really impact us, we're not putting money into it, but we're barely pulling that money out of this fund that has a couple hundred thousand dollars in it, so I think that'll be the question to be discussed in upcoming meetings in the next year or so, if we need to be withdrawing it and spending some of that money back to the cities.
Yeah, well, when I learned about how much we're allowing Apple Valley to not show up to false up the fire department that Alf was doing instead, we may need to reevaluate the relation, the business relationship.
That, that was one of the things that I brought up again at our meeting last week, was that I'd really like to see side by side the public safety related calls and what our police and fire are responding to versus Alf and how that changes per city. Because, I mean, anecdotally, we know of a couple properties in Apple Valley that get a ton of fall calls. Whereas in Lakeville, our fire and police are handling those when they happen. So, yeah, it's it's a, it's a drain on the system when you have Elf going to Apple Valley and staying there and then they're trying to get to maybe Southern Empire or whatever. So their call response times increase when they're always in Apple Valley.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Just to note, next month's council meeting, we will spend some time doing the tabletop exercise. That was one of the goals of the council.
Uh, next month. Three and two, what are you talking, in the.
Yeah.
Pretty sure that's fine. What's the date of that again? Be the twenty-third? Okay, what I'll do.
There is a fifth Monday that month.
I'll leave after the meeting then. I'll just.
Oh, because you're going then?
I'm going that week.
Are you driving my car?
Yeah, my car.
Is that okay?
Yeah, well, I'm just going to Iowa first and then we'll leave the next morning, so.
Okay.
If that makes sense, so, okay.
Is there other stuff on the agenda?
There will be, but we'll spend a considerable amount of time doing that, so it won't be too much more.
Okay.
That'd be a good one to do just before pan frog, you know? Not gonna be doing it, so we don't have to.
I'll see you that way too, busy week. Okay, I'll take a motion there too.
It's moved.
Second, okay. Pause in favor?
Aye.
Pause. Thank you, everybody.